Okay, we are live. And welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners on this July 30th, 2020. Uh, 2019. What am I doing with 2019?
Time's flying fast.
Time's flying by, yeah. 2019. All right. For introductions, on my left is Sean Flowerday. He, Commissioner Sean Flowerday, and also Vice Chair. On my right, we have Commissioner Krista Yocum and Commissioner Rick Vess. And I am Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board. And will you please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And thank you so very much. And will you now begin the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
A copy of the Breath of Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancasterne.gov. The Jan 9 and 1 are minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019.
So move. I second.
Okay. We have a motion to second to approve. The minutes, are there any corrections? Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vess?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through July 30th, 2019.
I move approval.
I second. Okay. We have a motion to second to approve all claims. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vess?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of amendments to the following contracts. C-14-422 with Fish Window Company for annual requirements window cleaning services. C-18-105 with Crossdale Tire for annual service tires, tubes, and tire repair services. C-15-62 with CBM Managed Services for annual service, food services for correctional facilities. C-16-472 with Nebraska Salt and Grain Company for road salt. A contract with RSM US LLP to provide financial auditing services. The services shall begin as soon as possible from the date of execution. The cost accounted is not to exceed $246,050 for the three-year term. Grant contract with Center Point for the community support outpatient counseling, medication management, and day rehabilitation program in amount of $337,594. Grant contract with Voices of Hope for the coordinated response to reducing domestic violence program in amount of $34,887. Grant contract with Heartland Big Brothers Big Sisters for the community-based mentoring program in amount of $20,000. Grant contract with Hope Spoke for the following programs. School-based therapy program in amount of $50,000. Diversion evaluations program in amount of $15,000. Settlement agreement and release between Nancy Weber and Lancaster County. Right-of-way contract with affiliated oral and maxifacial surgeons, Dr. JMC Block trustee, Southwest 14th Street and Westfellow Road in amount of $199. Received and placed on file the following. Lancaster County Fiscal Year 2019-2020 proposed budget and County Treasurer 2017 distress warrants.
I move approval.
You have a motion to second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vess?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number four, public hearings. The first public hearing is change of zone number 19018 AG Agriculture. Agricultural to AG Agricultural, historic landmark overlay on approximately 17 acres on preference generally located at 17185 Bluff Road in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
We'll open this public hearing now, and I would like to point out that there are actually two public hearings going on. We do have one with the change of zone, and that is the first one. The second one will be the special permit for the, for an event center, for an event center. So they are two separate ones. So if, so only if you have comments on one but not the other, wait until that time, okay? And so we will begin with the change of zone, and we begin with the staff report.
I'll need to, sorry, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Ed Zimmer from the Planning Department. I might mention that this is a public hearing we anticipate to be continued because we made an error in one of the notification letters. And to correct that error, we will re-mail that and continue this hearing to two weeks hence, the 13th. But we'll give testimony in day and answering your questions as well. This is the first landmark designation that's come to you under the changes you enacted in your zoning regulations, I believe it was just last year, where you formalized the process of designating historic properties. Previously, your regulations acknowledged the possibility of a special permit for historic property but didn't tell us how you identified historic property. And you had extended that special permit to a few properties in the county. This formalizes the process of how you're looking at the landmark and then creating the possibility that someone might ask for this category of special permit. And then so you can look at something other than me. I'd like to present you. Particularly aerial view, we're looking at a farmstead on a larger acreage. Really, it's the farmstead portion we're concentrating on in identifying an historic resource. And that is collection of buildings, residential building, a barn, and other associated agricultural buildings within a tree belt that quite clearly distinguishes that property. The main building is a house that I would characterize as an American four-square. It particularly has a lovely wraparound porch and a two-story glazed porch on the facade. And then we have a sizable, there are certainly larger barns, but we're really looking at the ensemble of buildings on this farmstead. The barn itself has this asymmetrical gable roof. It's a single-story barn, has a little bit of a haloff portion but isn't a full two-story barn. And then other associated buildings, a chicken coop. Corn crib now used as a stable and other associated smaller buildings. These buildings were built in the mid-second decade of the 20th century by the Cooley family. Edward and Edith Cooley. The family had owned the ground considerably before this farmstead development was done. We really identify a name to look at part of the background, but there has to be enough integrity to the buildings to be able to still tell a story of an historic period. And here we think we have a reasonably intact, good integrity farmstead that together reflect an early 20th century Lancaster County farmstead. We associate the Dodge name because that was a later family on the property, and I think more often people might refer to this as the Dodge Farmstead. In that naming, it's really just kind of developing a convention of how we would speak about a property. When we recommend a landmark designation, it begins with a review by the Historic Preservation Commission. They conducted that review and recommend to you it appears to meet the standards you had set out in your regulations for landmark designation. Goes on then to the Planning Commission. They review, they review it as well. They also recommend to you unanimously that it appears to meet your characteristics for landmark designation. And so as a department, we make that recommendation to you, and we carry on those recommendations of the two preceding boards. Only you have the authority to make that designation. If it is so designated, the historic properties and any additional development on the property would be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. And that is the first of the matters. Do you wish me to proceed directly with the special permit as well?
Okay. Mr. Vess?
Yeah, I do have a question, Mr. Zimmer. When this designation changes from the Ag to the Ag Historical, does that create responsibilities on the landowners to maintain the property in a certain manner then? I thought I read that, but I wasn't sure.
They must bring any changes to the Preservation Commission. There's also some underlying language that you cannot cause the demolition of buildings by deliberate neglect. Events can occur over time. We, we have physical things, we have tornadoes, changes might occur. You can't prevent those. But there is through the landmark designation a procedure for reviewing changes. And it does give that responsibility. They're accepting the responsibility to maintain the property in order also to make the request they're making a view for the special permit.
Okay.
And the two designations are separate. We have lots of landmark properties that do not have a special permit associated. But they aren't eligible to ask for this category of special permit without accepting the responsibility of landmark designation.
Okay. Any further questions? I would prefer to keep them separate.
Very good. I'll be here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zimmer. And I do need to mention this also because of, thank you, Mr. Zimmer, for bringing this to my attention. We are holding this, we are opening this particular hearing, both of the hearings. However, they will remain open until the 13th. And on the 13th again, then we will close the public hearings and take a vote on it. So there will be no final action today. And on the 13th, what we do hope is that only new information would come forward. Okay? All right. For the applicant for this particular change of zone.
Hi.
I'm
I'll need to swear you guys in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do. Hello. I'm Carol Hartwig.
And I'm Jed Hartwig.
And we are applying for the special permit in the historical overlay. So do you want us to talk right now about only the historical?
The only change of zone.
Okay. And so it wasn't our intention to get the historical overlay initially. And we had met with the county initially to talk about using our current barn in, in a manner of just like hosting some parties or what would need to be required for zoning, to use our current barn as it stands for small gatherings. At that time, we were directed to the fire marshal as well to meet with them to see the requirements for the existing building, which is when we found out that our existing barn would need so much change to meet today's requirements and codes for the fire marshal and the zoning. And that we decided to just maybe look at the idea of building a new building. When we ventured down that road is when we were directed to the historical, to Ed Zimmer, basically. And that's when we started meeting with Ed about the farmstead and all of the details that go along with that. And I don't know if I can answer any further questions than what Ed has already presented about the farm. He's done quite a bit of research, and we've done what we can to find the history on the farm. But we do believe that it is a wonderful farm from the early 1900s, so.
Yeah. And we've done a lot of work to keep them, since we moved in a year ago, we've dumped a lot of money into restoring them and bringing them back to life so that we do plan on keeping them the exact same way they were originally built.
Okay. Commissioner Shore?
Is this your primary residence?
Yes.
And it will continue to be even as you develop?
Yes.
I think that's important for neighbors to know.
Yes. Okay. Any further questions?
Well, I guess this is a follow-up. Thank you. I asked Mr. Zimmer, but you, you go into this knowing the responsibility that you're taking on as far as maintaining this historical site that's, it seems to be in very good condition a hundred and some years later, so. And it, just to be clear, you're, you're planning a meeting place, a gathering place for folks to come and celebrate events or whatever their reasons are. And you would have gone a different route, but kind of the planning statutes that are in place said, if you want to pursue that, this is the option you have to pursue.
Correct.
So it was the standards that led to this decision.
Yes.
And then another, another big reason to do the event barn is to, so we can keep funding, keeping our buildings up also.
Okay.
Because it's not, not the cheapest thing to do. Keeping them, keeping up with the buildings, that is.
How long have you lived there, folks?
Just one year.
Oh, okay. Welcome to the community.
Yeah. We've been away from the area for
Since 2008, 2007.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw in your application, you grew up on a farm like this in central Nebraska.
Yeah, similar to this. Although all of the buildings have been destroyed over the years, all of the original buildings have been destroyed. So we have the original farmhouse still, and then we have an old closet and, you know, buildings that don't look quite as nice as where we live now, so.
All right. Well, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We have proponents of this particular change of zone? Any proponents? Do we have any proponents? Okay. If you would please come forward. Did I see a nod over there for a proponent? Okay. Okay. Let's go on to opponents. Would opponents please come forward and speak?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Marlon Johnson, 5218 North 202nd Street, Alvo, Nebraska. Soon to be moving over to 17705 Bluff Road, just within less than a half mile away from, from the Hartwigs. The zoning change, I would ask you or anybody else, it, it seems like a just end-around play to come into a commercial-type application. And by that, I mean in our discussions with Carol and Jed last night, their intent was to have primarily wedding parties there because the cost that they intend to charge is gonna eliminate many other type receptions there. If the cost they're gonna charge is primarily driven by the wedding reception market, that sure seems like a commercial-type operation to me. And I would ask that you dig into that deeper to really see the difference. Just because you can change a designation and generate essentially 45 events per year, again, that's just not family gatherings. That is a commercial business with it. And I don't think it's fair or reasonable that Deer Springs, James Arthur Vineyards, Prairie Creek Inn, they're in the business doing this, similar things. And I'm sure they're operating under commercial avenues with it. So how is it reasonable and right to give somebody else the chance to operate, in effect, commercially underneath regulations that this historic overlay would presumably allow? That's all I have. Any questions?
No. You'll thank you. But thank you for your information.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning. My name is Peggy Brown, and I'm a fourth-generation farmer that owns land between Waverly and Bluff Road on North 176th Street. My farm was not homesteaded but was purchased 150 years ago with gold that my great-grandfather discovered in California. I have lived in the house he built my entire life with very little change made to it, and I have the papers to prove it. Even though I'm not being considered a neighbor by the applicant, I have traveled that road my entire life. And while working for the Waverly newspaper for 48 years, I travel Bluff Road at least six times a day, five times a week. Since retiring, I find myself still using that road several times a week. I live to the north of the Prose area, and some think it's over a mile away, but as a crow flies, it's three-fourths of a mile. I can see their acreage from my front porch. I see their traffic on Bluff Road. I see their traffic going into their driveway, Camp Creek, going up and down the road. Sound carries. Now, people think trees will block sound. It doesn't. I can hear traffic on the interstate. I can hear traffic on Highway 6. I hear trains. I hear the I-80 Speedway, which is 10 miles away with a village between us. I can hear their race nights. I can hear your state patrolmen stop trucks at the weigh station a mile, a mile and a half away. In fact, they were very active last night trying to get one to back up. Um, you can, I guess I question the rezoning mainly as, if you look out there, there's a lot of barns, a lot of buildings, buildings out there that are older and have history to it. For instance, my family farm was known in the county in the early 1900s to harvest ice during the winter. And we had an ice house. I don't have it anymore, thanks to the health department. And we, my great-grandparents sold ice during the summer for people to keep their products cold, that I have proof of, by the way. But I also know there's a story out there that my grandmother told that the Pawnee Indians liked to come into my front door to steal the salt off their table. I don't have proof of that, but I have the stories. This is where I have a lot of concern with Mr. Zimmer. I need proof. I have been a genealogist for 23 years. I have been recognized by the city of Waverly, the DAR, and several other organizations for looking up history. I just feel like there needs to be more information gathered on this broad area. Does this work for me too?
Um, well, if not.
I'll show, I'll hold it up. This is from you guys' book. This is a list of everybody who owned the land at one time, including my great-grandparents.
Yep.
You said, this is from the registered deeds. Look at all the people that have owned the land around that area. My great-grandparents bought it for a relative. My relatives then lost it and, due to crops and prices and everything. The Olsons will be here Friday or Thursday when I get the word from the county. I don't think these people ought to be ignored. I mean, you're ignoring the Axbergs, and I think I'm more upset about that. The Axbergs lived there between the Cooley's and the Johnsons and before the Dodges. I was up there a lot when Axbergs, when Terry Axberg, the granddaughter, was up there. We graduated together. I was in that house a lot. It's changed a lot. But why are we forgetting the Axbergs? They did a lot for the Church of Waverly, the Methodist Church. They did a lot for the community. They did a lot for the fire department, and all of a sudden, you're not mentioning it? I, I just don't understand that. Here is the, I put another one down.
One minute.
I put, this, this is the marker that you got out of Jordan Cemetery that I took when you guys dedicated it. What are you gonna put on this one? You know, Cooley Dodge Farm and everybody else who lived out there? I really think you need to look into the history more and give me proof. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other individual who is an opponent?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I am Mary Johnson. I live at 17705 Bluff Road. That is the, that is the property that we are currently restoring, so to speak, or working on. The property was owned by Dr. Ted and Alice Dome. I don't know how many of you know who Dr. Ted Dome was. He was an extension specialist with the University of Nebraska. He also had Japanese exchange students. He was in exchange program with the university. He did a lot for agriculture in the community. I have a problem with this historic overlay being used as an avenue or a venue to have a party house or a wedding venue now. It's been called many different things. The reason they're getting the historic overlay is to allow them to have more functions versus the limited number they would have without the overlay. This is an avenue, a loophole, if you will, to get what they desire at the expense of the community aesthetics. How will an event center add to this historic designation? The original property did not have a, an event center. The original property has been remodeled. It has been compromised many, many times to make it modern. My husband and I own a 1917 Sears &amp; Roebuck home. I suppose we could get historic designation on that. And it looks like you walked back into the 1940s. That's the way my parents kept it. If you look at the Tate Farm, the Tate Acreage, which is on Highway 34 and Highway 63, it's a big two-story house on the north side. They made an attempt to go and rebuild those buildings exactly like they were at the time when the Tates owned it, when the, the Tates were direct lineal relatives. These people are not direct lineal relatives. So perhaps there's more to this, to this farm than what we don't know about. You know, I, I understand historic reservation. It's to try to keep that piece of ground the way it was. So it is a model of agriculture in the 1920s. I do want to bring up a couple of things that Andy Stock, who could not be here, he wrote a letter to you guys. He, he owns the farm ground that is to the east, borders it to the east, and borders it to the south. And he, he put, why the Planning Commission found such importance in what they call a great representation of a farmstead in the early 20th century, and then voted in favor to allow the Hartwigs to build a modern reception facility on the same property is perplexing to me. It is clear that the only reason the Hartwigs pursued a historical overlay was to gain the special permit to host events on their property zoned as agriculture. Without the historic overlay, there is no way they could receive a special permit to run this kind of business on an agricultural property. I believe we can all agree that building a new reception facility that hosts a couple hundred people, maybe 100 people, on a weekly basis is a commercial building, not an agriculture-related venue. As a farmer and taxpayer in Lancaster County, I am asking why you as commissioners would not require this to be zoned as a commercial facility built to commercial code and taxed as such? There's another individual that couldn't be here today either and who's a neighbor of mine, and that is Nancy Mokroff and David Paulson. They own some ground down on 176th Street. If the property in question would receive historical landmark status, how is it possible to put a new building when the intended use of the building has nothing to do with the history of the farm? View sheds are areas of land or other environmental elements usually of historical or scenic value that, that can be seen from public areas like roadways. The preservation of historic view sheds should be one of the goals when working with historic landmarks. A new barn built on property with historic landmark status would radically alter the historical view shed of the property, and it would no longer look like what it was originally. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Yes. That's all I, okay.
Okay. Good morning to all. You know, you see, I'm not very experienced at this, but I want to tell you what I'm thinking, what my thoughts are. And I say good morning to all of you. I'm Clarence A. Oldhouse Jr. Most people call me Artz. So in case there's any discussion of who I am, I'm always the same person. I live at 8650 North 134th Street, Waverly, Nebraska. I'm here to oppose the request for a change of zone from agriculture to agriculture with historic landmark overlay on property located at 17185 Bluff Road. I first learned of the request from an announcement in the Lincoln Newspaper for a public hearing on the change of zone. The property was The property was called Cooley Dodge Farmstead. That woke me up. My, Cooley's are my grandparents. I saw the name Cooley there, and I said, "What is this? What is this?" It had never been called Cooley Dodge or anything. Somebody made that up. But anyway, they chose to call it Cooley Dodge. The family never called it that, the public never called it that. The Cooley's were my grandpa, grandparents. They had lived on the property at one time, but only as the same as all these other families. The family of the Fred Johnsons, Pete Axberg, Wally Axberg, Dodge, no different than the Cooley's that lived there. It was simply called, by each one of them, it was called their home. None of it called them a homestead. That was just born here recently, I guess. Neither the Cooley or the Dodge family has requested the change of zone or the designation as a historic landmark. Nothing historic or unusual has occurred or taken place to justify a change to historical landmark overlay. And I've, I tell you, I've, I've lived there all my life. We worked with all the neighbors. I knew all the neighbors, the neighbors all worked together. We, uh, they said we, we cut ice together, we thrashed together, uh, we cut silage together. Everyone worked together and helped each other. And no one ever wanted to have, or made any attempt to get any honor or any accolades for a thing we, we had done. Each one knew that we were all, together, we were all the same. We all, they, they all went through the hard times, and I'm telling you, it was really hard for these people too. And so this is something that I can speak, I think I can speak for my grandparents. They don't, they don't want this notoriety or anything. They, they never did crave that. They were humble people. And I'll say again, there are no, nothing of a historic nature has ever taken place on this, or unusual thing has ever taken place on this, and I've, I've been close to it for, well, for seventy years now. And so I, I know what goes on there all the time. I, I say to promote the property as a historical landmark, landmark is not being honest. Many other properties in the area are exactly the same as this property. I didn't understand exactly what historical overlay was, so I called Mr. Zimmer to find out what this was all about. He said the Hartwigs had requested the change in the zoning so that they could build and operate a business in the agricultural zone property. He had looked at the property and stated that the barn would not qualify for historical The home may be a candidate if it has not been altered or changed from the original home. Mrs. Hartwigs said an addition has been added on the east and a new kitchen added. The front porch has been enclosed. These are substantial changes from the original home, and I do not believe that we, the building site can qualify for historic landmark overlay.
Mr. Oldhouse? Okay. Would you be able to wrap it up? We have five minutes.
Oh. Okay. It seems that this request for zoning is simply a request from the Hartwigs to allow a, a commercial business in egg zone, with a guess to go to an area zone for business to start their business. I, I ask you to deny this application for the zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Oldhouse.
Thank you.
Do we have another opponent?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Mary Alice Johnson. I live at one one six five one North Hundred and Seventy-sixth Street. I'm about, well, by land, I'm like about a mile away from the Hartwigs place, but as the crow flies, I'm about less than three-quarters of a mile. And I'm against the zoning action because I have issue with the historic designation. I, I don't feel like a new construction should be built on this. Um, I worked for an architect who, for fif, over fifteen years, who specialized in historic preservation, restoration, renovation. And so I'm familiar with the, the guidelines and recommendations of the Department of Interior, and it states right here that, that, uh, new construction is not recommended. And imitating an earlier style of period of architecture and new additions, blah, 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 they're against it. It's not recommended. And I think it goes against, if this is designated a historical landmark because of the farm, this go, having a commercial venture, just, it doesn't work to me. You know, it just doesn't make sense. This is a really closed-knit community. My husband and I have lived on this farm for forty-one years. We have worked, you know, as you can imagine, to make a little piece of Eden. And after forty-one years, we're almost there. We're still always working on it. But we both retired from our full-time jobs. We're still active. We own two hundred and forty-four acres. We're, we're still active with the farming operation. We have seen so many things happen in this neighborhood. I'm kind of the Gladys Kravitz of the neighborhood. I keep an eye on everybody. We keep an eye on each other. We take care of each other. And I've seen a lot of, just, I think with the, because we're close to Greenwood, we're close to Waverly, there's a lot of illegal, questionable activity that goes out, goes on out there. And I just feel with an event center, it's just gonna bring more people out and more litter, more noise. I mean, that's what I'm concerned a lot about, the noise. I mean, last night I went out at eleven-thirty. I thought somebody was in my front yard. Well, it was the weigh station. Look how far that away is. It just depends, you know, which way the wind is blowing. It doesn't matter, you know, trees don't really cut down, crops don't cut down on noise. It just, you know, it just happens. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about litter. This winter, the other thing, you know, mentioning that we're such a close little community, and we all share farming in common. This is a farming community. This is not a commercial community. And another point I want to bring up too is that Waverly, the mayor spoke in favor of it. I don't think that should be taken into consideration. That should be irrelev, irrelev, I can't say it, not relevant, because we're not part of Waverly. We don't get to vote in their elections, so I think that should just be ignored, that And then going back to the closed-knit community, this winter, um, there was probably a dozen or more snowmo, snow machines in our neighborhood and on our property, on our neighbor's property. And, um, I came upon them, and I stopped them and asked them if they had permission to be on our land. And as it turns out, it was the Hartwigs. And they, I was just met with rudeness, arrogance, and entitlement, cursing and swearing. So they have proven to me what kind of neighbors they are.
One minute.
And thank you for listening to me. And any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Do, do we have another individual who will, who is an opponent? Do we have another individual who is an opponent? Okay, let's move on then. Do we have anyone in?
Roma?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
The clerk's office had some emails in opposition to the change of zone, number one nine zero one eight, and a special permit, one nine zero three three, and these were sent in by Peggy Brown, Andrew Stock, Mary Alice Johnson, and we had two emails from Nancy Mocroft and David Paulson.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone in a neutral position? Do we have anyone in a neutral position? Okay. Are there any questions that you have of the staff? I just have one for... Commissioner Short?
There is no quote-unquote limit to the number of historical properties that can be designated in Lancaster County. Is that, is that true? I mean, I guess we're hearing some testimony that other properties are more historical than this.
You are correct.
Question, I guess.
You are correct. Your regulations do not put a cap on the number of designations you might, they describe the characteristics of the properties you would designate. In Lincoln, between landmark designations, individual landmark designations and districts, there are a very large number of designated properties. Our history also develops over time, and our views of what's important expand and develop over time, I think in the nature of understanding the past. So certainly there are many other, and there are identified historic properties already in Lancaster County that this, this would be joining that list.
And can you talk a little bit about how the designation of Cooley Dodge was determined? Should it be just Cooley? I mean, should there be another name? Can you explain that a little bit more?
We really aren't designating people. We're, we're designating properties and then trying to assign a name that might make sense. That could certainly be different if, if we gathered information that, that there were better designations. It really is just, it's virtually a nickname, trying to refer to something in a way that people would recognize. It's not quite like naming the animals in the garden, but it's simply trying to assign a recognizable name, and, and that could be reassigned. That, that really isn't the heart of your designation. It's the physical property. We also aren't designating the current owners or past owners. We're designating a physical place. That's what zoning does.
Okay. So if there was information that another name for this property might be appropriate, you would be open to that?
Certainly. And the, the reason that Cooley is at the heart of it to me is, is you really are looking at the, the, the first creation of the physical place that you're designating.
Right.
So I would, um, I, I don't own the Cooley name. Uh, there is a property designated Zimmer in, in the city. It was a great-grandfather of mine. That's not why it was designated. It was the physical place.
And then the applicant pays for the plaque to be?
There, there's not a plaque required. If, um, you, you, a predecessor board in giving some assistance to that cemetery wanted also to identify that place, that isn't a requirement. That would be entirely up to the owners if they chose to put a sign, except it would be reviewed by the Preservation Commission because they're accepting that responsibility to have changes reviewed.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
And I'm Ed Zimmer.
All right. Well, thank you for your time on this. This particular, um, change of zone will be revisited, as, as mentioned before, on August the thirteenth, and so it will remain open until that particular time. Well, let's move on now to the special permit, uh, number one nine zero three three, and this applies to the event center special permit. And again, I would like to have the staff come forward.
Um, this is special permit number one nine zero, zero three three for an event center. Special permit is part of the preservation of a local historic landmark. I'm property generally located at one seven one eight five Bluff Road in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Ed Zimmer from the Planning Department. By your regulations in, in your, your zoning, you have a procedure for recognizing a landmark, and if so, owners then could use that procedure to make a request of use for use otherwise not allowed. It has to be consistent with the continued maintenance of the historic qualities of the property. We have here really kind of conceptual special permit application. They're asking for an, an event facility. They are giving us conceptual site plan as this were, if, if you approve this, as it's refined, they would be bound to come to the Historic Preservation Commission with their more refined site plan. Reason that the Preservation Commission made the recommendation that they could see this occurring on an historic property is that the essence of the historic designation is the farmstead within the tree mass. There's other land available in which they felt conceivably the right design of a building and of landscaping could be added to the property and still preserve the historic character of that farmstead portion. They're proposing what they're calling a barn or an event facility north of the main farmstead portion with parking north of that between the facility and the road and landscaping, probably based on that tree mass as, as the final addition to the plan. Both the building and the site plan would have to be reviewed by the commission. Their broad concept on the building is that it would have a barn-like appearance but meet modern safety and, and code, code standards, and that would have to come in. This is not the design for their building. This is their concept, and that would have to come into the commission, be reviewed under the design standards for the designation. Secretary of Interior standards certainly do exist to guide the rehabilitation and maintenance of historic properties. They also give guidance on what character of new property might be added. We wouldn't be seeking here to make it look like this was the original barn of the farmstead, but rather a building that was in the spirit of the agricultural setting. Landscaping was in the spirit of the agricultural setting. That would be the standard that would, the commission would be applying. There are other facilities in New York County. Prairie Creek Bed and Breakfast and their event barn might be the most similar to this. That was one that was granted by your special permit procedure on egg zoning, um, but you didn't have a clear procedure for designating the landmark. You had to do all of the landmark part of the, um, business through the special permit itself. Here, I think you have a clear, cleaner and clearer process, which is why you adopted it a few years ago, to say, "We want to identify why it's a landmark, then we'll look at whether the use would work in its setting and, and preserving." And you really are applying on behalf of maintaining the historic character. That, that's, I think, the, the basics of their application. It would really have to be refined and reviewed by the Preservation Commission if you, if you granted this application.
Mr. Redd?
Yeah. Mr. Zimmer, and then just, I'm laying this out in my mind, and these two actions are tied together. In other words, the gathering place can't go forward if the change in status from ag to ag historical doesn't. If we don't allow that, the second one then becomes null and void. And I, I guess, not trying to confuse the issue too much this morning, but they, there's just no options available to these folks to go forward with the building that they want under their current designation.
You, you have other provisions in your zoning code. Extended home occupation is one that I think some others have used for somewhat similar concepts. This is one that, that you've, you've had this special permit in your code longer than I've been in my office, which is eighty, nineteen eighty-five. And you basically were applying it to properties that might be National Register or some of the other mechanisms for designation. But it really seems more coherent to have within your zoning code, if you're recognizing, if you're granting privileges to an historic building, how does your procedure recognize that building and then govern the design changes that might occur? So they're, they are bundled together, and they're in concept and in your, your own regulation. And there are various commercial operations that can exist under ag itself. Ag is certainly a commercial activity, hopefully, of a category... Ag is certainly a commercial activity, hopefully, of a category, but a very specialized one, of course. This is their concept, and this application, I think, are a package. There are other, when they first came into zoning, and talked to some of my colleagues, the provisions of extended home occupation, for instance, didn't really fit their concept as well as the request that was made of me of, "Look at the historic, look at the property. Might it be a landmark property? Could it use your provisions for landmark special permit?" Recommendation to use, we think it can, but that's up to a majority of you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shore?
And this might be for Steve. I know we have Deer Springs and James Arthur that operate one way, and then you mention Prairie Creek, which operates a different way. And I'm not going to, Avalon's completely different, but let's talk about Hillside for a minute. How they operate as an event center without the historical designation?
And I'm glad you directed that to my colleague.
We were going to get him up here when we were done.
Let me go ahead and swear your in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. So some of the other ones, specifically Hillside, came in under the expanded home occupation. And the home occupation does allow for you to have any number of potential commercial uses. So under expanded home occupation, you've had self-storage. You could have a cabinet shop. So you could have other ones that are also clearly a commercial use, but the idea is that they are part of a home occupation. The people live on the site. In this case, the applicants are going to live on the site. There is still going to be farm property on the site as well. So they could have used the home occupation. In the case of Hillside, because of the proximity of nearby residences, there was some concern about the noise because people were so close to that. And so the number of events was limited as a result of that. The home occupation also then talks about the number of people who are on the site engaged in the occupation. I was about to say employed, but we changed that because particularly with an event type of center, you don't necessarily employ anyone on your payroll, but you hire a lot of people who come and set it up or serve drinks or music or all those type of things. And so that is a limitation that also comes with some of these as well. And we try to have some kind of an equivalent to an event center like Hillside where there's quite a few people engage in the occupation on Friday and Saturday, and then there's nobody there the rest of the other five days. So that certainly was an option. They also looked at the historic preservation as another option and decided to go with the historic preservation, which, of course, while it allows them to also apply for an event center, comes with a lot of restrictions that would not have come with an expanded home occupation. If you do an expanded home occupation, you can tear down your house. You can tear down all the barns. You can do all those kind of things because you're simply looking at, as long as you live on the site, it doesn't matter. Here, they were willing to have the trade-off of there's going to be a lot of restrictions on the house and other buildings, but it gives them a little bit more flexibility in terms of the event center that perhaps there wouldn't be a limit on the number of events at any one time. That said, we looked at this particular one, as we were talking about it with staff, that given the proximity of the interstate, given the fact that there weren't any houses immediately to the east or the west, there's Camp Creek Threshers across the way, but some of the houses that were in the vicinity were actually very close to the interstate and that most really of the impact of the traffic would be heading west back toward Waverly or back toward Lincoln. We thought that not having a restriction on the number of events was appropriate in this case. May have been a long answer to that, but that's trying to explain what was done in Hillside and why this one is a little bit different from that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, staff? Okay, let's go on then to the applicant.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do. Okay, so moving along to the event center side of the application. We were contacted several times, pretty much immediately after purchasing our property, by people interested if we would share our barn with them for small events or weddings or whatnot. We're in the construction field, so I do have a presence on social media where I advertise or put pictures of our work. When we had a birthday party for myself, pictures were on social media, and that's when we were almost bombarded with inquiries of using our barn. I mean, dozens of people from the area that were following my construction business were inquiring about the barn. Being entrepreneurs, we felt like this is a kind of something that we don't want to miss. We don't want to ignore an opportunity where there's an obvious need. And then we started thinking about our location. The reason we bought our property is because of the close proximity to Waverly on a paved road, close to Highway 6. It is a nice location. There is a little distraction from the interstate, which I would think would create a nice buffer for any of concerned neighbors because the interstate with 35,000 cars driving by each day, I think is going to be louder than any type of disruption we would be hosting inside of a building. Also, we have Camp Creek directly across from us. Thousands of people attend Camp Creek each year. And all the people that live around us are able to tolerate that, and that's an outdoor, obviously, an outdoor event. So we're not trying to be bad neighbors. We're respectful. I grew up in farming. I still own part of our family farm for the third generation. We are just wanting to basically help our community. We see this as a win-win. Waverly doesn't have a great event center for hosting events. There is a community center, but it's not aesthetically somewhere where many people in their same age would want to host like a wedding. It has more of a commercial appearance, I would say. And we're trying to create just a nice ambiance. I'm in design. That's what I do for a living. So I'm planning to create, you know, a beautiful area for people to gather and definitely do not want to take away from our community or our neighbors or anything that we could do to, you know, cause negativity is not what we're going for. We just want to add to the land and to the community. So that's, I know.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time up here. All right. Any other proponents of the special permit?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. I'm Mike Warner. I live at 10220 East Oak Lane Circle. I'm the current mayor of Waverly, and I'm here in support of their application for this special use permit to build such an event center-type building. I say that because I believe the applicants are correct that there isn't a place in Waverly today that can probably house a couple hundred people. It is a community, Waverly Foundation Building. It's heavily used. It's busy a lot. There has been weddings hosted there. I believe what they're trying to create here, the community would easily support. We're a growing community. There's people that's always looking for places to house wedding receptions, wedding parties, birthdays, outdoor events, agricultural fundraising events, you name it. And there's nothing out there today. So I believe it would be used. I honestly do. I think it would add value to the community at large. I like their concept. I said before to the Planning Commission, I liked how there was restrictions placed on if they were to build a facility, an event center, that there would be buffering considerations, that there would be things like facade. Facades would have meaning on the building. I like the concept here that it would look like a barn. They're not trying to imitate maybe their exact buildings that are there, but I think they're trying to imitate an agricultural-type setting. And that has meaning to me. The city of Waverly, as you well know, our extraterritorial jurisdiction today is within about a quarter mile of their property, but then a quarter mile of Camp Creek Threshers. So in time, it won't take that much time as the city would probably move forward with residential properties. There is property for sale. There is potential of developers looking at buying property and moving residential housing eastward. It wouldn't take that long to where our one-mile jurisdiction would probably encompass these properties. Certainly, when we go over a city of the first class, 5,000 people, our ETJ goes to two miles. Then it would encompass all this property. I just believe it's a good value for our community at large. That's the bottom line. By the same token, I said before, and I'll just say as a side note, we would work hard with Camp Creek Threshers, too, that we would love to see a way to where they could protect their way of life forever. That if they wanted to run threshing shows 100 years from now and there's housing or other developments around there, it's like, nope. They're allowed to do all those things. Those things is important to us. That's what makes our character of our town, I guess. Camp Creek Threshers, things like that. So I know these people. Some of these people have, the heart, my neighbor works for them as a contractor. They've taken numerous oldest houses in Waverly, remodeled them or brought them up. They've improved the value of the property. They've done nothing but raise the assessment for our town with their projects they've done. I think they would put a pretty fair assessment on what they're doing out here, too. So they're people of character. I stand behind them. So that's all I really have today. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Okay, let's move on then to the opponents of the special permit.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, again, my name is Peggy Brown, and I live just down the road from this. Again, I'm against this special permit, but I'm here mainly to tell you about the Camp Creek Threshers. We are the largest independent show Lancaster County has each year. By independent, I mean, there's no one to help us. There's no, we don't answer to state. We don't answer to any county organizations. We're it. What we do, what we raise, that's it. We just recently had our 43rd show 10 days ago. We had three inches of rain Sunday morning. We spent the majority of the day pulling vehicles, campers and vendors out of the showgrounds. And it will take us years to get the grounds in top shape again. Yes, we lost money, folks. We're going to have to tighten up our belts just on some of the projects we had in our head, what we wanted to do. We have six regular events each year that bring anywhere from 50 to 8,000 people. This does not include the Boy Scouts, the First Nebraska Regiment. That's a Civil War reenactment club that come from Omaha, who uses the ground for drill weekends. The State Patrol has used it. We have a lot of weddings and Baptists. I've never had a death. I've never had a funeral. And when I was an officer for a year, that was my goal. Never had it. But we have had a lot of weddings. We've got weddings planned for this fall. We even have, we have a billing out there that we do rent for parties. We have it rented for this fall for a family reunion. We've had a film crew out there filming for months. I feel like the Camp Creek Threshers has put Waverly on the map. The majority of these events do take time during the daylight. We realize that. They don't include liquor. And when the show is not in use, there's always somebody out there working, and they're going to be working a lot after last weekend. Dab can ask last winter if they could use the parking lot for a fundraiser they were having. I told her I had no problem with it, but she needed to talk to the officers. But since then, I have talked to Camp Creek's insurance company and agent, who I still have on speed dial, and asked him about it, and it was all about liability. And he said, "I could have the cars towed. The Threshers could have the cars towed." So they're going to have to work with the Threshers on this. They just can't pull in and use. Even if they're members, they're going to have to work. They can use our church for their weddings, but we charge for the use. They can be members, but we still charge for the use of the church. That money comes to the Threshers, not them. They'll have to understand that completely. Question about the brick house out there. It's rented. It's not rented right now. It stays, it's being occupied by the family. There's an agreement with that, that it's the original people that own the land get to live there. So yes, it is rented. It is not rented. It is being occupied. I have a terrible time saying rented. I'm sorry. The pavilion, besides the pavilion, Waverly has a community foundation building that Mike talked about. We have the Waverly VFW Hall. We have two church basements. They all have parking, lights, air-conditioned kitchen. Mid-September, we have our fifth building opening up that will welcome weddings, parties, any kind of events like that. In fact, he has already got a few booked. Once that gets out, that he's got this big building, I look for him to be very busy. We're also just seven miles straight from this place where they want to build is Deer Spring Winery. They have a party barn. You go down the road 10 minutes, you got the Ashen Country Club. You go 10 minutes this way, you got the event center. To me, there's plenty of places for people to have parties. I guess in a way, I was kind of offended how this was all handled. I think you, I just can't tell you how offended I was. Like art, we read it in the paper. We heard it through the grapevine. I don't like, I just don't appreciate how we were contacted. We've never been contacted by the family. I just, I tried to help him out four or five times. I finally tried to get her in the right direction. I thought I did good. Apparently, I didn't because she never told me this was going on. Historical markers are made to teach a way, like I showed you, they're to teach people a little bit about the public. I'm scared you're going to put this historical marker in front of the Cooley Dodge place, and people are going to drive down the road and not be able to see the farm, but just that building. They're going to think it's for the Camp Creek Threshers, so maybe I ought to thank you. That's it.
What? I guess, if you say please.
Okay. Any other opponents?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning. My name is Steve Althouse, and I live at 19107 Waverly Road, about two and a quarter miles to the northeast of the Hartwig property. I'm going to speak primarily, try to keep my comments to the special permit today, although these things are so entwined that there may be also some comments that'll come back to the zoning. But I do speak in opposition to both of the requests here. I'm a farmer in the Waverly area. Farming has been my heritage for many generations. I live in a farmhouse that was built by my great-great-grandfather. And actually, my great-grandfather was, is Edward L. Cooley, whose name has been associated with this property. I guess with respect to the special permit, I feel that this proposed use is not compatible with the historical and contemporary land uses of both this property and in the area. The county has those, the preservation guidelines that have been referenced here by a couple of their speakers and the standards that they give. I might remind you and just quote here from those. Number one says that every reasonable effort shall be made to provide a compatible use for a property which requires minimal alteration of the building, the structure, or the site and its environment, or to use a property for its originally intended purpose. I feel that the proposal presented here in the special permit does not, it fails- I feel that the proposal presented here in this special permit does not, it fails to adhere to that standard. None of the historical structures are being used for this proposal. Proposed use has no connection to the use of the property for its originally intended and zoned purpose as ag property. The new structure that's been proposed, if built, would likely have a valuation that would be greater than all of the other historical buildings that are on this property. Um, I would argue that adding improvements of this scale is not minimal alteration of the site and completely changes the purpose and use of the property. This type of business activity is much more suited to areas that are zoned appropriately. I'm also an adjoining landowner on the west side of this, um, of the Hartwig property, and I'm concerned, as a farmer, that this would allow activities that are incompatible with the activities that normally occur in ag-zoned areas. I operate a farming business. Our work can produce dust, smells, noise, and farm equipment traffic at certain times of the year. These activities are all allowed in ag zoning and occur when the season is right, and many times they occur well after dark. Unfortunately, I, the other adjoining landowners, and the farmers in the area, will have to deal with complaints and pressure to alter our activities to accommodate these special events. I feel this is an undue burden that could be alleviated by citing this commercial activity in an area that's properly zoned. Um, as presented, that it was suggested that they would be hosting forty-five weekend events per year for up to three hundred people. I think that's an unreasonable accommodation for ag-zoned property. Accommodations for social halls and the like are better served in other areas of the zoning code. Um, if this special permit does move forward, I would certainly hope that there are greater limitations placed on the use of it for this type of an event. While the current applicant and landowner may acknowledge the farming activities, there's no assurance that future landowners and permit holders would do the same. Thank you, is there any questions?
Thank you for your time. Any other individual?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. As I said, my name is Mary Johnson, I live half a mile from the proposed event center over the interstate bridge. There's a lot of confusion as to what this event center will entail, and it has been a fluid, changing, ever-changing event center. We first heard about it two, a little over two weeks ago, when we got the letter from the planning committee. That was our first acknowledgement of this. And I would have liked to, and I think most of the neighbors would have liked to have heard about this previously. I know when we go out and spray certain fields of ours, if we have an acreage that is around it, we will call them up and say, hey, we've got an airplane that's gonna spray up on the side, it's not going to hurt you, do you have any apple trees? So we make sure we're doing things right. And that's just being a good neighbor. I mean, that was the first we heard of it. So we went to the planning committee, and we as neighbors, we want more information before the Hartwigs are allowed to proceed with this venture. I called Carol the night before the planning committee meeting, because I didn't know what they were looking at. I was told, when I asked her about some of our concerns, I was told we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Well, as a neighbor, I wanna know some specifics, and I think we all wanna know some specifics. At the planning meeting, one true concern that was brought out was the safety of the community and those using this proposed facility. Jed Hartwig stated at the planning committee meeting that they could have three hundred-plus people at any one event. Carol corrected him and stated, no, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine or less, as we are not going to put in sprinklers. That's a safety aspect, people. I mean, I ran out houses, they have, they have a, a smoke detector, they have a fire extinguisher, they have a carbon monoxide detector. I don't cut costs when I, in my rental property, and I don't think this should be cutting a cost either. I think that's a disregard for the safety of those involved and for the community, too. You've got a consideration of the Waverly Fire Department is volunteer. Suppose we have an incident there, and they've got to get the fire department out there, that's a volunteer fire department. Think about that, people, they're on pagers. They don't get paid for what they do. I think it should be a commercial designation. Event center and do it the proper way. Do it for safety purposes, um, do it the proper codes, do it the right way. We as landowners, we wanna compromise, okay? We don't wanna say, no way, but we were told forty-five events, up to forty-five events a year. That's gonna be pretty disruptive to this community. How about twenty events a year? But maybe twenty events a year wouldn't cash flow the building. And I know everyone in that community would want to say, no events, Camp Creek, weekend. There's a lot of traffic down that road, there's a lot of traffic down that road, period. I just moved over there the last year. There are bicyclists, there are motorcyclists, there are people on their four-wheelers. There, there's a lot of traffic. Once they hit that interstate bridge and they hit my gravel, they fishtail. You know, they, they can lose control. Now, if we have alcohol at this event center, what are we gonna do to monitor that? Because I'll guarantee you, when people are drinking, they're not gonna take the pavement back into town. We all know that, they're gonna take the gravel roads. So that's gonna be an increase in traffic after an event. And what about specific hours? I ask you guys to table this request until the Hartwigs can provide more concrete plans for their future event center. I feel, and I think everyone who's in opposition would agree, this is being rushed. We as landowners were not contacted, and so we received the letter from the planning committee. The Hartwigs finally reached out. Last Friday, we got a postcard to go over to their place to discuss it, their concept, and we received that postcard last Friday in the meeting with last night. So there wasn't a whole lot of time for discussion. I think we all should have been contacted a long time ago, and we should have had a discussion on what their intended use was, positive or negatively impacting the community. Thank you.
I have one question.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Mrs., Mrs. Johnson, if you would take, uh, did the meeting take place last night? Were you able to hold that meeting?
Yes, I was there at the meeting. They showed a concept of the barn. There was not any discussion about hours of the venue, um, maybe, and maybe they don't know for sure, 'cause it's still a quote, "concept."
That could be understandable. I mean, that they don't have all those details.
I guess the question I have is, if you're going to do something like this, I would think there would be a business plan that would be put into place, because who's going to loan money or provide money for something like this until you have a business plan? That shows how it affects the community, you know, the, the intended revenue, the payback, the ROI, all that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further?
I need to swear you in? Could raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Again, I'm Clarence Alt House Jr., or, or, or Alt House. I'm opposed to the approval of the special permit, number one-nine-zero-three-three, to allow special events at one-seventy-one-eighty-five Bluff Road. Some of the things that I go through here may have already been brought up, but, uh, some of them are in here, but I'll let you know what I think about it, these are my thoughts. The term events can be described to include nearly any kind of a gathering. I, I think that was purposely just called event, because then there's no limitations, no one can control, anything will be permitted. There can be many conflicts. This property is in a farming area. One of the goals of the county zoning, zoning is to have agriculture where it works best, commercial business in the place they are prepared for and can be served and controlled. They should not be scattered all over the county. Anyone can have trouble controlling a party of up to three hundred guests in the country. I expect there will be problems with alcohol at a party of three hundred invited into the country. You, we have many problems in the country outside of Lincoln, I'm sure your maintenance workers will tell you how much trash all of them and all of us have to pick up from people that just drove into the country to get rid of it. If there is problems, the fire and medical personnel, it's in the Waverly Fire District, these are all volunteer workers. They must be called from their work or location to respond. The application has no limitation or requirement on what is approved. The public has not been informed about any zoning changes and future plans for the property in this neighborhood. The application for the permit is an effort to take all control of rural property from the county board. These same, same steps taken here could be taken by anyone, any place in the county. A story could be presented claiming a historical landmark on the property, as in the case of this store, it could be completely false. I would urge you, uh, you, urge you as a county board to refuse this special, this special permit. Any questions I could answer?
Thank you, for your time.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Marlin Johnson again. When I look at this whole thing, I see almost a logistical nightmare for some of the services that this county provides. Law enforcement, fire protection, medical emergencies, uh, you know, it's, yes, we have pavement to get out to the place, but if you look at parking for two-hundred or more people to go, Jed made the comment last night when we met with him, approximately a hundred and fifty parking spaces they'd planned to do on a gravel-surfaced area. Um, you know, and that's up in the air. I, I mean, that's just a thought right now, will that change? So, uh, we, you know, in visiting with Pam Dingman, she is very clear that there will not be parking on the Bluff Road, as there should not be. Suppose the weather, and we all know how weather changes in about fifteen minutes, they have an event planned and people decide they cannot park in this gravel parking lot, where are they gonna park? Or will they attend? Will they turn around and go back? You know, is it, that, that will be determined later, but I, I really question the logistics of that aspect of it. One of the real problems that I have with the zoning on this and the intended use is, granted, this is an agricultural area, we all know that, but the United States Department of Agriculture Farm Service Agency with the Lancaster County office here does not recognize those seventeen acres as a farm. Hasn't for years. Yes, there may be some old farm buildings on it, yes, it probably, well, it was at one point in time, but has not been for years, is not today. So how can you really technically refer to that as a farm? You know, this is more of an event center venue that is gonna be used for purposes beyond agricultural education. Uh, you know, I made the comment earlier, maybe the closest this will get to being anything agricultural is if the bride wears cowboy boots. And I, I mean that in sincerity, because it just doesn't come across in any of the information that they are going to do anything to represent agriculture, teach anything agricultural there. Uh, it's, it's really short in that aspect of it. Uh, I mentioned to the planning commission, I had traffic concerns with agricultural machinery going up and down Bluff Road. Now, yes, we are seasonal, particularly planting and harvest. Uh, and I'm sure that's workable. The Bluff Road meets the federal and state and county requirements, but it's not always easy when you're driving a large combine to have a real onslaught of traffic that you're trying to work around. I mean, we'll do the best we can as far as not trying to be in the hours, you know, when they would be doing something, but sometimes that's just not possible with it. So, um, I have a little bit of concern as far as when I visited with Jed, the design of the barn. I said, will it have a second story, a loft? Oh, no, it's gonna be open to the top and, and fourteen-foot eaves with it. Well, that really, most old barns that I've ever seen in my lifetime have always had a loft or some structure up above, so how does this new design replicate some of the old buildings? I mean, it's, I just don't see that with it, so, um...
One minute?
Thank you. I do have a concern as far as the hours of operation. Deer Springs goes until nine PM in the evening. I think that's very workable, uh, certainly for them. I would request that something along this line be done here. Uh, you know, it, yes, it's a limitation, but to preserve the quietness in the community, that is important with it. I can hear train whistles, it's roughly one and three-quarters miles away at this one-seventy-seven-oh-five Bluff Road. Train whistles are typically hundred, a hundred and ten decibels. An average conversation is about fifty decibels. Uh, music by karaoke bands, whatever it may be, is certainly up in the eighty or more category. Uh, there's no doubt in my mind that I'm gonna hear that noise to my place, what will be my place, across the interstate. The interstate truly is not a buffer. I, I never believed that for one minute, so, um, that really, I, the last concern I have is the area they're putting this on. As I look at their area, they have nine-point-three-five acres of open space that is not windbreak, not a four-wheeler racetrack obstacle course, uh, their house and buildings. If you're trying to put all of this on plus a future pond in these nine-point-three-five acres, that's gonna be awfully tight when you consider the setbacks to the adjoining properties, county roads, what have you. So, that's all I have. Any further questions?
All right, thank you. Okay, any further comments by opponents? Any further comments by opponents? Okay, is there anyone in a neutral status? All right, do we have any questions of the staff? Any further questions? Okay. All right, well, as mentioned before, this will be revisited on August thirteenth, and so the, the, um, hearing will remain open until that particular day. Uh, at that time on the thirteenth, we will entertain new information only, okay? Um, thank you for your time, we appreciate you all coming in and sharing your viewpoints. Okay, and next is the old business.
Yeah, number five is resolution on a matter of adopting minimum road standards for roads in unincorporated areas pursuant to Nebraska revised statute thirty-nine-dash-one-five-zero-one, bracket five.
Good morning. Kent, I'm from the Engineering Department. Uh, this is a resolution regarding the sub, rural subdivision, um, maintenance criteria that kinda consolidates, uh, several older resolutions that, um, have been kinda misinterpreted or just needs to get them all into one resolution. Um, so I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Could we ask, yeah, could we ask just for-
I'm from the Engineering Department. This is a resolution regarding the sub, rural subdivision maintenance criteria, it kinda consolidates several older resolutions that have been kinda misinterpreted or just needs to get them all into one resolution. So, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Could we ask, yeah, could we ask just for, what do you see as the basic changes that are taking place here?
The basic changes of, there's three criterias depending on the number of lots and the size of the lots, the subdivision has to either attain an eighty percent occupancy, seventy percent, or sixty percent. Mainly the ones that are like three-acre lots need to have a six-lot minimum, sixty percent occupancy before we require the county to take over or maintenance. There are some subdivisions that have, that don't meet that criteria, but have a through street that, that connects to two streets that are already maintained by the county. So, and this allows those subdivisions, which are smaller in nature, they can't attain the sixty percent or the six-lot minimum because of the lot number side, automatically are gonna be maintained by the county. They don't have to have any occupancy at all. It's just by having a through street that connects one subdivision or one county maintained road to another, that they'll automatically be maintained, that the roadways will be maintained. And what it eliminates is that little segment of town, of public road between two maintained county roads that aren't, that will never attain maintenance because they don't meet the minimum lot size.
All right.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, just for transparency, I did want the board to know, I did receive an email this morning from Christina Usher, and I'll apologize for this, Ken and I kinda got our, our wires crossed. I thought he was sending a draft of this to Christina, he thought I was sending a draft to Christina, and she would like two more weeks to review the document because it's substantially different. Again, that, that is an email I received this morning. What I would like to remind the commissioners is that Ken and I have said this is kind of step one, we really need to go back and assemble a task force and look overall at these regulations. This, maintaining subdivisions, we simply do not collect, we do not receive enough tax, property tax revenue that comes to our department in order to maintain the roads in front of these subdivisions, and really any subdivision maintenance further depletes the overall county operational budget. And so, of course, we've been asked to, asked to maintain these, and similar to when the commissioners receive unfunded mandates, this is somewhat of an unfunded mandate for the county engineers department, so I just would like to kindly remind everyone of that.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Any further questions? Two-week delay? Do we need to, what was your question?
It said two-week delay.
I heard.
All right. Should we, do we need a motion to have a two-week delay?
I would move that we reconsider this in two weeks.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to delay this for two weeks. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number six, new business, six A and B will be held until, until August thirteenth. Six C is a resolution in a matter of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty annual cost of living wage adjustments for unrepresented classified employees, attorney ones and twos, deputy sheriff captains, and district court staff attorneys. All wage adjustments are to be effective August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a resolution setting a public hearing regarding vacating portions of Southwest Otilla Road, more particularly described in exhibits A and B, and located in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a resolution authorized in removal of traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, we did receive notice from the Department of Transportation last week that they had miscalculated the postings of these four bridges. Postings are made per their requirements, so even though you have previously approved us posting of these bridges and we made the signs and indeed followed the process and posted them, now we are being asked to change that. And so, I bring forward this to you with signs at these four locations, we'll be reposting.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for this resolution. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a special designated license application from the Nebraska Resident Association for an event at Hillcrest Country Club, ninety-four oh one East O Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, on September ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Move approval?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the S D L. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six G has been withdrawn by the applicant. H is First Amendment to County Contract C dash nineteen dash zero three four six with Zell LLC. The amendment provides for additional professional services to be provided to the Department of Community Corrections, the cost of county is not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars.
Good morning. I wanted to come this morning and explain the amendment to this contract that the county currently has with Zell Consulting. Following the board's decision to not allow hiring of new staff this year, it required that I return to my office and make some decisions about how to proceed. I pulled my management team together and we discussed changing some responsibilities amongst my staff, and in order to do that, I felt like it's really probably in the best interest of my agency to have them involved in those decisions. I'm more than certain that my staff have thoughts and ideas about how we can improve efficiencies and coordinate programming, and so, in the process of making the decision to do that and have a staff meeting to do it, it was suggested to me that we reach out to Zell, who's been doing work with the Leadership Academy for the county, and ask them to help with this process. So, I talked with Ann Ames about adding an amendment to this contract and work with the county attorney's office, and the goal is for them to come in as a neutral party, listen to what, what is going on, what we're doing well in our agency, what we can do to improve, and how we can more efficiently manage amongst ourselves. We do a lot, there's a lot going on in my department, and it's going to, to continue to operate and function at the level that we do, it's gonna require that we have kinda coordination and, and agreement amongst all of us. So, it seems reasonable to bring a neutral party in to help us with that process.
I will move approval.
I would second that. We have a motion and a second to approve this amendment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
That was a good initiative.
Six I is a quitclaim deed from the County of Lancaster to the City of Lincoln, quitclaiming the county's interest, if any, in part of the southwest quarter of section fourteen, township nine, township nine north range six east, Lancaster County, Nebraska, more particularly described in the deed.
I move approval.
I second.
Motion and a second to approve the quitclaim deed. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is an agreement with the City of Lincoln to repair an inlet structure on property commonly known as six twenty-five North Forty-sixth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, and legally described in the agreement, the city will, will repair the inlet structure at no cost to the county and thereafter the county covenants to maintain the structure.
I move approval.
I second. Motion and a second to approve the agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is an interlocal agreement with Sarby County for safekeeping, care, and sustenance of pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Lancaster County will be reimbursed at the rate of two hundred and seventy-six dollars per juvenile per day.
Michelle Schindler, just real quick, as you know, we contract, other counties contract with us for services. This contract is so that we can hold a youth for Sarby County, pre-adjudicated at our current rate while we're figuring out the new per diem.
Perfect. No questions now, you.
Right.
We were all there.
Yeah. No, I understand. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you. I move approval.
I would second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement with Sarby County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is acceptance of Deputy Sheriff's Temporary Retirement Buyout Program Application and Agreement between the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, and William Woodruff, an employee of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Woodruff's resignation is effective approximately October twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Good morning, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. Just for your all benefit, this temporary retirement buyout has been a temporary thing for about fifteen years now, and what it does is it takes the deputy's unused sick leave balance and puts it in the PEP premium account that the county has set up. So, Deputy Woodruff is retiring. It'll be forty-eight years he's been with us when he finally pulls the plug, and so, this is his temporary buyout payment for his unused sick leave.
I move approval.
Second.
You look very sharp today, Sheriff.
Do we, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six M is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county treasurer to award a contract to Perrigan Services Inc. for printing and mailing real estate tax statements. The estimated amount for the four-year term is one hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
I move approval. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation.
A quick question, is this a new provider of these services? Nope. Okay, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is a contract with Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company for annual supply John Deere filters.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is an agreement with the State of Nebraska Department of Transportation to establish the terms upon which the state will assist the county in obtaining federal approval and funds for the two thousand nineteen fracture critical bridge inspection. The county's share of the total project cost is estimated to be four thousand sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents. The agreement is effective upon execution by the state.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, so Lancaster County has twelve fracture critical bridges. The reason that inspecting them is so very important and is specialized is with fracture critical bridges, the bridge has no redundancy, and so therefore it can fail suddenly and dramatically. Last week, there was one of these failures in North Dakota where a overloaded grain truck, he weighed forty-three tons, or forty-three thousand tons, the bridge was rated for fourteen, well, he weighed forty-three tons, the bridge was rated for fourteen tons. At least the cab and the truck made it through the bridge, but the trailer ended up in the creek. We don't want those kinds of scenarios to happen in Lancaster County. Of course, we also encourage people with overloaded vehicles to follow the law and not drive over these bridges. In the future, I've been told that Lancaster County in, in upcoming years will be responsible for the entirety of, of inspecting the scour critical bridges, and so I wanted the board to be sure that will be an additional cost for us next year, and we'll have to find a specialist because it is a very specialized inspection.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is an agreement with Straight Line Striping Inc. to provide pavement striping for project nineteen dash twenty-six. The cost to county is not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, this is our annual, a little late because of the way our funding ended up this year, our annual contract to, to paint the pavement, and so, it's really important those lines are on the pavement, they do help with safety. In, in the last few years, we have dramatically upgraded our process, so you may notice if you're out driving in the county at night or during the rain, that those lines are dramatically more reflective because they have a recycled ground glass bead in them. So, that's what we're gonna be doing and to improve the safety of our roads.
Very nice. I move approval.
I second. We have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Now, do we use curved line gray, uh, striping on the turns? I mean, or straight line can modify their procedure.
Well, we're fortunate enough in Lancaster County not to have a lot of curves, like many of our peers do. However, that being said, we have a few. The equipment is very succinct, it's laser-driven, near the edge. We do try to go out and get the pavement cleaned before we lay down the, the paint. I mean, we've all seen those pictures on the internet and on Facebook where as roads employees were mocked because a dead animal is painted over. I'm sure that's what you're referring to, Commissioner Vest. I will tell you that, you know, when, it is a very precise thing, when you're driving that machine and trying to hold that, that machine completely steady, and so, that does happen. I'm not gonna say it doesn't, but it's a factor of how difficult the job is.
Full disclosure, it wasn't Lancaster County I was thinking of.
I'm not gonna say it hasn't happened here, though, Commissioner Vest.
Okay. Fair enough.
Six Q is an agreement with the E and A Consulting Group for professional engineering services as specified in the agreement related, related to county bridges S one seventy-nine, R two-ten, and R four, two forty-eight. The cost to county is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and five cents. The work is to be completed on or before December twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, this is Bridge S one seventy-nine, which is located on the pavement of Roca Road, just east of Ninety-Sixth Street. Bridge R two-ten, located on Martel Road, just west of one hundred and twentieth Street, and Bridge R two forty-eight, located on one hundred and twentieth, about the midpoint between Hickman and Stagecoach Road. So, we do like to send these bridges out for design in, in groups because we do get some efficiency with that. We like to group them all in one area. I will note that there's been many times the last several years that we've throttled through these designs, and although the public may think a year is a long time to design and construct a bridge or a bridge to box culvert program, they really are two to three-year projects. And so, with this contract, we're gonna at least get the design for these three bridges. I do hope to be able to, to throttle through S one seventy-nine. I get calls on it almost every day. It is on pavement and is dramatically impacting our residents that live in that area.
I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Why does she have to be doing that?
Six R is our recommendations from the purchasing agent and Lancaster County engineer to award and execute purchase orders with the following. Wick Sterling Trucks Inc. for two two thousand nineteen plow trucks using the State of Nebraska contract one four five one five OC. The total amount of the order is three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Sid Dillon Ford, Inc., for two two thousand nineteen one-ton crew cab four-by-four dual rear ri, rear-wheel trucks using the state Nebraska contract one-five-zero-three-eight OC. The total amount of the order is one hundred and twelve thousand sixty-two dollars. Nebraska Machinery Company for three Caterpillar, Caterpillar twelve M-three rear, rear-wheel drive motor graders using the state Nebraska contract one-four-one-nine-two OC. The total amount of the order is six hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Wick's Sterling Trucks, Inc., for four two thousand nineteen Western Star Plow Dump Trucks with RDS beds using the state Nebraska contract one-four-five-one-two OC. The total amount of the order is seven hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Good morning, Ron Bohati with Lancaster County Engineering, and I've got with me Bud Geislinger. Um, I've got a lot of information with me, so if you have questions, I'll present it because of time, I won't unless you ask. I do wanna point out that on the attachment for the motor graders, we did have a change. Uh, there were some terms and conditions that accidentally got attached to the original quote. When we revised that and sent that in, the PDF got swapped around, and you only ended up with the, the quote on there. So, I, I believe the clerk's office has that, and we can add that to it, and that would be the requisition that's signed and a copy of the state contract.
And what money are we spending? I mean, this, is this twenty nineteen, twenty monies, or is this?
So, uh, as, as the commissioners may recall, I was here last week asking to have additional spending authority, even though the budget isn't technically, uh, approved yet, and the reason for that is during the bomb cyclone and also during the events of May of this year, we really have lost the resiliency of our system. And so, what we're trying to do is get these equipment orders in. They do take, uh, often six to nine months to get fabricated and get to us. My hope would be that they could be to us this winter, or, or maybe a little sooner. We are working with the suppliers to see if we can squeeze that schedule so that, again,